We have lost between there and here.
Can you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Welcome everyone to the regular public meeting for the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, July 22, 2025. The Board of Supervisors did meet an executive session on July 8th and prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of potential litigation related to zoning, code enforcement, emergency services, and matters of real estate related to parks. Want to remind everyone to come out to Pen Ambler Park for our next summer concert on Wednesday, July 23rd, which is tomorrow, featuring Patrice Hawthorne at 7:00 PM. This month's food truck is from the boot on the move and it's going to start at 6:30 PM. Want to also remind everyone that Senator Collette and Representative Liz Hambridge are holding a license plate restoration event with the Lower Gwinnett Police at the Township Building Parking Lot on Saturday, August 2nd from 9 till 11 AM. I wanted to start off with some sad ending news, I guess. We're going to recognize Henry Hank Stovall for all of his years of service in the township. And on behalf of the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors, we're proud to recognize and sincerely thank Hank Stovall for his remarkable 19 years of volunteer service and his even longer role as a committed resident to our community. Hank has called Lower Gwinnett home for more than four decades, and over that time, he's become a trusted and respected figure in township life. Beginning in 2006, he served on the Lower Gwinnett Municipal Authority and later joined the zoning hearing board in 2017, first as an alternate and then as a full member. In every role Hank brought fairness, thoughtfulness, integrity to the table, always putting our community first. In 2018, Hank was honored as our Lower Gwinnett Citizen of the Year, which was a well-deserved recognition of his unwavering commitment, his quiet leadership, and his deep care for the people and places that make this township special. Whether navigating zoning matters or supporting local initiatives, Hank has exemplified what it means to serve with purpose and humility. We're truly grateful for the time, insight, and heart Hank has given to Lower Gwinnett. His presence on our boards will be greatly missed, but his legacy of service will remain with us. Hank, thank you for everything that you've done on behalf of the Lower Gwinnett Board of Supervisors for doing it with grace, generosity, and deep love for our community. We wish you all the best in your next chapter and hope that you take the appreciation of this grateful township with you. I'm going to call you up. I do have a resolution for you.
I just want to say it's been educational, rewarding. It's also a bittersweet move to leave the township because it's been a wonderful 47 years, great township, but it's time to move on. Everyone, you're in good hands with this board, and thank you for the recognition. Have a good night.
Thank you. Also wanted to take this time to remember our former solicitor, Jim Garrity. Lower Gwinnett Township, we wanted to acknowledge the passing of our former solicitor, James J. Garrity Esquire, who served the township with professionalism and consistency over many years. Jim brought decades of legal experience in municipal land use, zoning law, and provided steady legal counsel to the township through a variety of complex matters. His longstanding service reflected his commitment to local government and the communities that he represented. We want to extend our condolences to his wife, Rosemary, and to his entire family. I want to say this on behalf of the entire Board of Supervisors, current and past. With that, I wanted to open up tonight's meeting to citizen comments, concerns, or questions for items not on the agenda. Anybody online? Okay, next up, under building and zoning. We wanted to consider the appointment of E. Van Riker to the zoning hearing board to fill the vacancy of an alternate through September 12th, 2025, and then for him to continue as a regular member throughout the term vacated by Mr. Stovall through December 31st, 2025. I'd like to make a motion. Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you so much. I don't think Mr. Riker is with us tonight.
Congratulations.
But congratulations are. Next up, consideration of the decision in order for Gwinnett Mercy's High School conditional use application included in our board packet. There's the memo. Let me just get to it. I'm sorry. There was a memo from our board staff. The hearing was held on June 24th for the Gwinnett Mercy Academy High School Conditional Use Application, requesting approval to install a paved trail and pedestrian bridge to allow direct access to the athletic fields in the rear of their campus. To install the bridge, they'll need to do additional grading work with the repairium corridor, and the code requires that the repairium corridor buffer for 25 feet and any disturbance within that area should only be permitted through conditional use. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up is the consideration of Folkways Conditional Use Application Form Stormpipe to be encroached into the repairium buffer, included in the board packet as a memo from our staff outlining the conditional use hearing that was held on June 24th, and the request for conditional use approval to install approximately 140 feet of stormwater pipe with an existing drainage channel in preparation for the construction of a future fitness center. Additional information is included in the board packet. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have on our agenda a discussion around Gwinnett Estates' historic structure, but I've been told that they would like more time, so I would like to make a motion to table this agenda item. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up is the consideration of Resolution 2025-12 Sewer Planning Module for Gwinnett Estates, included in our board packet. There's a memo outlining the resolution, and in January, basically it's indicating the history. In January, we approved and amended a land development plan. Wait a minute, no. Hold on one second. Went to the wrong thing. Hold on one second. I think I have. I think so. No, I don't. That's what I was reading.
That's what it is.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I thought I had the wrong resolution. Okay, the board approved and amended a land development plan for Gwinnett Estates. That approval included the addition of a two-story building in the northeast corridor of the site. It would be for a new assisted living facility, which will add 39 units, resulting in an additional waste flow of about 3,937.50 gallons per day. Acts is required by PA Department of Environmental Protection to complete sewage facility planning module for new development, to amend Act 537 of the Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Lower Gwinnett Township, and we're required to submit an approved resolution of that amendment. Are there any questions from the board? This is a PADEP required form. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda is to discuss and review a sketch plan, but I was told as well that this was asked to be tabled so that they could have more time, so I'd like to make a motion to table item number six. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Has been tabled. Next up, it's consideration from the board related to a zoning hearing board application for 1348 Sumney Town Pike. Mr. Tursky, do you have something you want to say?
I do. I'm going to refuse myself from discussion or voting on this matter as the applicant is represented by a partner in my law firm.
Seeing that, this application is currently before us, and consideration for us to have a discussion as it relates to whether or not we want it to send our solicitor or not to represent the township in this matter. I'm going to just articulate that off the bat, I am in favor of sending our solicitor related to this property and this matter, and this is this application. There's a lot of concerns that I have related to the application. I know there's a lot of public interest, so what I'll do first, or we could have a conversation about it as a board first, and then open it up to public comments and hear how the rest of the board feels or where you guys are sitting right now.
I agree with you. I have concerns with this sketch plan, and so I would, assuming what the public comment is, doesn't change my mind. I'm inclined to agree and want to send our solicitor to that hearing.
Rest of the board have any comments?
Yes, I do have a concern also. The subdivision as laid out is encroaching on wetlands in the property, and so I have a concern about that, and also maybe the size of the lots that are being proposed.
Anyone else?
Pretty much, I feel what everyone else is saying. I definitely would like to hear more.
Okay, so open up to public comments. If anybody wants to make a comment?
Good evening. My name is Joe Clement. I am with the law firm of Whistler Perlstein. I am taking over Jim Garrity's representation of a neighbor group in this area that is comprised of about two dozen or so neighbors, all of whom share your concerns. There's environmental issues. There are environmental resources on this site, but perhaps those really aren't issues that are ripe for consideration this evening. What is ripe for consideration by you all is the fact that we believe that the applicant has completely misapplied the historic resource protection standards. This site is actually not one parcel. It's five parcels. Montgomery County has parcel numbers for each of those parcels. The parcel on which the historic home is located is a four-ish acre parcel, 4.11 acres. We believe that at most, the historic preservation standards only apply to that particular parcel, and perhaps they should only apply to the parcel that is resulting from the subdivision on which that historic resource will eventually sit. So we believe that that is a threshold issue that needs to be worked through before this is even considered by the zoning hearing board. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments?
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. My name is Dan Lyons. I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
I think you have to hold the microphone unless you propel your voice.
Speak up. Is that better?
Yeah.
There you go.
Pull it out and hold it up.
Thank you all for being here. Dan Lyons, on behalf of the applicant. I just heard you all have some concerns with the application. In order to somewhat address those concerns, we're here to answer any questions you may have. I didn't hear too much specifics as to the issues. I know you mentioned lot size as one issue, but we'd like to discuss some of those issues that the board does have with the application, so perhaps we can address those issues moving forward.
So I think this is really just us having a conversation about whatever those issues can or would be, and considering whether we want to send representation to the zoning hearing board. So it's really about whether we want to send our solicitor or not. Any supervisor that wants to share additional concerns? I know Tessie's shared some. I don't know if anybody else wants to.
I mean, another concern, I'll just add, is it's a heavily wooded area, and so that's troublesome to me, the amount of trees, I think, that would need to be removed to build the amount of homes that at least this sketch plan is proposing. And that's in addition to the number of homes and the size of the lots and the wetland encroachment, but the amount of trees is a problem for me as well.
I mean, essentially just the impact it has with everything that has been stated, also just the impact of the area generally. I'd just like to learn more about what or how it will impact.
Okay, and those issues will be addressed at land development if and when we get there. Certainly, the zoning hearing board hearing will address those concerns. We have consultants, engineers, traffic engineers, et cetera, that'll testify at that hearing and present documentation, so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to address all those concerns that the board members do have. I did want to address Mr. Clement's comment about the threshold matter. It is our position that it is one property. It's been considered one property for many years now. It's deeded as one property, even if you go on the Board of Assessment website and look up the UPI number, the parcel number, and click on that, it comes up as 15 acres. And this project, this property, has also been subject to prior applications that you may be aware of years before. There's been review letters that were issued. None of them brought up this issue of it being not considered one whole property. There's also, in the zoning ordinance itself, in this specific provision that we're requesting a special exception from, it doesn't have any specific requirement of the specific subparcell has to enclose this historical resource, has to have this historical resource, says the affected area. So this whole property, again, has been considered as one, deeded as one, assessed as one by the Board of Assessment as well. So it's our position that it is considered one property. I agree with Mr. Clement that that's not necessarily a legal argument that we're going to flesh out today, and maybe that is a threshold matter that we'll need to address before the hearing, and I guess we will address that because that will affect the application. The special exception, as you know, is kind of a misnomer. It's not special, nor is it an exception. It's a permitted use permitted by right on the property so long as you meet specific criteria in the zoning ordinance, and we believe we have and will meet all those criteria as we will present at the zoning hearing board.
Would you like to say a few words about the environmental impact? The wetlands and the trees that are going to be affected?
Sure. It's my understanding that there's no relief needed for the removal of the trees that are on the site. I will also say that our engineer couldn't be here today for this meeting, so he would probably be able to speak to more of those environmental concerns, so I'm speaking from his understanding as well. The wetlands, there are some wetlands on the property. You might be, to kind of go back a little bit, you might be aware that there was another sketch plan like this that was submitted, and then it was revised to this lesser amount of homes here. There was one with approximately 20 or 21 lots that did come off of Forest Drive there on the property that went through wetlands, more significantly than this proposal. From this proposal, you can see that it goes around the wetlands and it minimizes the wetland service as much as possible. There will likely be a conditional use that is required for this to cross those wetlands in those two areas on the southern side, so we will be back for that as well. You know, this is just the first step here, but again, it's my understanding that no environmental relief is needed other than crossing the wetlands and those locations with those streets.
Okay, well, so you can appreciate the community's concern this historic property being subdivided into homes and significantly affecting the environment of that property. So I hope you will have a satisfactory answer and justification when you go in front of the hearing board.
Absolutely. That's what the engineers are prepared to discuss.
Thank you.
I just will speak, I guess, generally. I think everyone covered the majority of the issues. I think for me, fundamentally, I think you're misapplying the historic preservation to the entirety of this parcel, which I believe is more than one parcel. And so I think that fundamentally is the basis for why I would like our solicitor to go. But there's a whole plethora of other concerns, most of which lie outside of the zoning hearing board application, but some of them have already been discussed and spoken to by the rest of the supervisors. That's kind of where I stand. Outside of that.
Here was it.
That's what I was going to say. Is there any additional?
I just saw a chat thing come up. I'm not sure if they have a comment or if... Oh, they're just saying it's very hard to hear the board.
We're trying our best to propel our voices. I apologize.
I did have one question just about your application. Did you guys have a historic impact study performed yet? Or are you planning on doing that before you go to the zoning hearing board?
It's in process.
Okay.
So we'll have that for the zoning hearing board. And one other thing I wanted to mention, Madam Chair, is as you mentioned, the misapplying the special exception provision. With this application, we're proposing 13 lots, 12 new, one existing with historical resource. We believe that it's possible to develop this property with approximately 10 or 11 homes without the special exception. So with this proposal, it keeps the historic structure, which is, I think, important to the township, so just wanted to add that as an additional consideration as we go into the zoning hearing board.
Appreciate you highlighting that, sir. Any additional comments from the public? You can just come on up and state your name and address. Thank you, Mr. Lyons.
Hi, my name is Greg Horn, 1013 Evans Road, and I know there are different constituents here tonight, but I do want to express a concern about the ingress egress of this property onto Evans Road, which is very close now to Sumney Town, and I think it creates a significant safety issue. So I think studies will have to be done, and I really hope that the township pays attention to the traffic issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Come on up, Mr. Clement.
It seems to me that both the applicant and my clients have agreed that there is this threshold issue of application of the historic preservation standards. If that is the case, perhaps the zoning officer could issue an opinion preliminarily before this matter goes to the zoning hearing board. That would provide an opportunity for us to understand better where the township's position lies with respect to that particular issue. And if I may, Mr. Stein, I'm going to hand this to you. This is the deed of the property that was reported in 1996. In that deed, that is the first deed where these properties were combined into one deed. The reason they were combined into one deed is for tax purposes. This was a 319 preferential assessment deed. On the first page of that deed, Mr. Stein, I'll point you to the fact that it says at the bottom there that it is, in fact, only for 319 purposes. Also, on the last page of that deed, before the tax, realty tax transfer form, in between the stamps that are the county stamps, it indicates that that deed in no way is to be considered a consolidation, merger, or reverse subdivision of those parcels. It's simply a Board of Assessment tax deed. So to the extent that this is ever considered one property, it only can be considered one property by way of the township approving a reverse subdivision plan and having a consolidation occur. That never happened. The only description, legal description that consolidates these parcels anywhere is when the current applicant purchased the property, identified all the specific parcels, and then also created an outbound description. So from our perspective, this is a very clear issue. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I don't want you to have to argue your case in front of us who are not the zoning hearing board. This was just an opportunity for the public to give us feedback or to hear about the zoning hearing board application and offer up any comments or concerns to the board as we make the determination of if we want to send our solicitor on behalf of the board and the township. If there's any other additional public comments, you can feel free to come on up. You can come on up and just state your name and address.
Hi there. My name is Pam McKernan, 1347 Sunset. So the concerns I have, many have been already echoed. The flooding was one that was already mentioned. The question I have too is, there are several very large basins. So is it the assumption that an individual homeowner that the basin is on manages that? Or is that a basin that's representative of all the properties? So is there going to be a HOA that manages it? So how do we handle that?
I said that's one of my concerns as well, and it does look like it's on individual lots. So the assumption would be that the individual would be managing it. I don't know if you want to ask the applicant's attorney who's present tonight, but I mean, I guess those are concerns that we also would have. Mr. Lyons, if you want to speak to it, you can?
Now, or I can sit down?
Or unless you're not done.
I mean, there's a few. So 13, we'd be managing a very large basin. That would be for the entire neighborhood. So managing the basements and having an HOA.
I think there's two basins that you see on individual properties, right?
Excuse me?
There's two basins, right?
I know. Well, the one I was pointing out was the 13.
Okay.
That was the one that caught my eye.
Okay.
So just an HOA to manage the basins as opposed to a homeowner managing basins for all of them. But you're right, there are several basins.
Okay.
Cut trees and replace, I feel like that should be standard, you know? Cutting these trees, if you cut one down and you replace one. Our understanding, when we bought the property and we've been here, it would be five years in October, that it was five properties. That's what we were told. So that's, you know, I can't speak to all the legal conversations. So, and obviously, the size of the properties as a result of that. So that would be my concerns. Thank you.
Mr. Lyons, if you want to, you feel no obligation, but you have an opportunity if you would like. Just to clarify, I think the question is, is there going to be an HOA based upon the sketch plan that's presented? Will the homeowners who the basin's property appears to be on those lots, are they going to be responsible to upkeep and maintain the basins? And I think thirdly, we'll cut trees, and we don't have to talk about the trees.
The proposal is to have an HOA, and the HOA maintains the stormwater facilities. So not the individual homeowners. The HOA will maintain the stormwater management facilities.
On the actual property owner's lots?
That's correct.
Okay. Is the open space identified in here?
It's not specifically called out, I don't believe, no.
Okay. Thank you.
But Dan, the HOA would ease mid-sover the lots.
That's correct, yeah.
Any additional public comments? Are you, you want to have another comment, Mr.?
Just briefly, again, and every time I come in here, I want to say something else. The lots, I think the minimum lots in this, lot size in this, in this zoning district is 40,000 square feet. I believe only five or six are below 40,000 feet. The average is 46,000 feet. So we did make an effort to make those lots larger than from what they were before when they had the 21 lot plan, and all of that was done because of, we heard of the public outcry there. So we did want to address that. That's why it went from 21 lots down to 13. Big part of that was the consideration of all the people behind me and the lot sizes and et cetera, so.
Before you just step away, Mr. Lyons, can you tell me are any of these flag lots?
Depends on the definition of flag lot, I suppose.
Based on your definition?
I would say, no, I guess. The only one that might be considered a flag lot would be the one that's retaining the historical piece.
None of the three on the?
But it depends on...
None of the three on the right? Looking at the plan, three on the right.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking above you. Yeah, I, it's, it's, I don't know. Again, I don't know what the definition of the, of flag lot is in your ordinance off the top of my head, but it, it could be.
Okay.
It could be.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You can come upstairs and just state your name and address?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Stephen Wheatman, 1441 Parsons Lane, and also president of the Parsons Glen Community Association. I just wanted to, uh, let the board of supervisors know that for the Parsons Glen Community Association, we share the concerns that have been raised here tonight, basically all three. The destruction of trees, the encroachment on the wetlands and the traffic. As it stands today, I mean, someone else recently said about the ingress onto Evans Road. I'm actually concerned about the traffic at the intersection of Evans Road and Summietown Pike. As it is today, it can take several light changes to get through that light at rush hour times. So don't know what they're gonna do about other traffic mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments? Okay, you can come on up. Was there somebody over here too? I'm sorry if I saw, saw phantom hand.
Hi, I'm Heidi Chalison. I'm at 923 Lorian Drive. And Lorian Drive, um, also has two entrances. One is close to where the entrance to this proposed development would be. I'm very concerned about the traffic. You know, I, the light here at Summietown and Evans Road is very long when you're on Evans Road. And there's also the, um, Septa Train Station down the street. Uh, I would presume at peak hours that there could be a backlog of cars up at this light, maybe even blocking the entrance that they're proposing here. I also have a concern regarding the lot size. It's not consistent with the homes that surround it, those on Lorian Drive and some of the homes on Sunset and then those on Stonebridge as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Any additional comments?
Hi there. I'm Mara Jennings. I live at 904 Lorian. And I didn't know if you all knew that this builder applied before and the township did a traffic report way back when and a environmental report way back when.
We know.
And I have great concerns. I'm not as concerned about the traffic, but I am very concerned about the wetlands because I live at the bottom of Lorian and already Truellen Creek overflows. It's like we have a bridge problem, like they have to keep rebuilding it from, you know, the overflow. And then the really big houses that are like at Gypsy Hill and I think that's Gypsy Hill and Evans, their new houses, their yards turn into a pond. I mean, not just a pond, like the, the creek overflows into their yards. So I think the wetlands are a major, major issue and I am upset that a builder would ignore a report completely and keep trying to shove down, you know, new houses into a township. It shows lack of respect to you guys, you know, and our tax dollars that paid for those studies. They didn't use those, you know, so.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. Anyone else? Any additional public comment? Seeing none, is there anyone online? Okay, so I think we have before us the consideration of whether we wanted to board to send our solicitor on behalf of the township and the board, uh, to the zoning hearing board hearing related to the application for 1348 Summietown Pike. I'd like to make a motion to send our solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we're gonna note for the record that Mr. Tursky was recused. I'm gonna take this time. If anybody does want to leave, by all means, you can leave. There's no, we're not holding you hostage here. Thank you so much.
That was hard. I'm not gonna lie, that was hard. It's hard for me.
Next up, we have consideration. I'm sorry. Uh, I mean, we, we've already voted, but, uh, you can come before us, Mr. Holcomb and, uh, Homequist.
Just a clarifying question.
Yes.
Eric Holmquist, 1500 Evans Road. Just, uh, to clarify, you know, the solicitor attending zoning, just clarify what the capacity is. Is that just there as an advocate or is it to represent a position on behalf of the township?
Mr. Stein?
There, as I understand it. Oh, sorry. I'm there as I understand it in opposition to the application as it presently stands.
Okay.
Unless the board tells me otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the introduction of a sketch plan related to proposed townhomes and redevelopment of the Spring House Nursery and surrounding properties of the Triangle of Cedar Hill Row, Cedar Hill Road, and Bethlehem Pike by Route 309. I believe Mr. Penna is gonna be doing a presentation.
Sure, where I can put these.
Oh. We don't have a, you can use a chair. Do we have a easel? Oh, okay. Do you wanna, oh yeah, try that one.
It's, it's a little on there. It's a little on here.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah.
You can kinda see it?
Okay, thank you very much for having me in tonight. What I'm doing is just giving you guys a, a look at what I'm proposing for what I'm calling Gwinnett Point, uh, which is the triangle, uh, properties that intersect 309, Bethlehem Pike, and Cedar Hill. So it's a triangle piece. Currently on the, um, presentation that I sent last week, there's actually been a kind of a change here. So I've actually also acquired the point, the triangle point. So now all nine and a half acres that are comprised that triangle are part of this proposed plan. Um, so that'll change a little bit, but at least gives you an idea of what I'm trying to accomplish here with the redevelopment.
I'm sorry. So is that the point that's on the diagram?
Correct, yes.
So you've added that?
Yes. That's why it's not included on the drawing right now, that, because I didn't have that under agreement until the last week.
Are you gonna propose to put homes on that or is that?
So this is just a concept and I'm just trying to get that feedback from you guys now. So what I'm trying to propose is that, and I'll get, I can get through that eventually, but, um, why don't I go through it first and it'll kind of play out to answer that question? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. So, um, I won't bore you with who I am. I think most of you know who I am, but I'm Pete Penna. I own, uh, Penna's Italian Market. I developed Fairland Village, which is a mile down the street. I bought those three separate parcels, combined them, used the lower Pike overlay district, zoning to redevelop that property into what's there now. So I use that, uh, and I think I'm one of two developers that have used that zoning so far, um, over the years. Fairland Village was 3.8 acres, uh, a very successful development, um, vibrant, great residents, great tenants, great businesses, um, doing very well. We won awards when we were building it. Hopefully, or probably would have won more if COVID didn't kill everything and everyone around us, because we were finishing up right when COVID was, uh, hitting. So, um, but some of the pictures here, this is what the development is currently. For those of you that have either been there or have been through there, um, in, on 3.8 acres, we had 23 townhomes and a commercial center, which was mixed use, um, kind of what the spirit of that, uh, lower Pike overlay was. So those are just some pictures of Fairland Village. This is the part that kind of changed. Currently says five parcels totaling eight acres. It's now six parcels totaling about nine and a half acres on the Triangle of Bethlehem Pike. The last one that's on there is also a residence. It's 1201 Cedar Hill. So that's the added property. Uh, the existing conditions of the property, which is on there, um, Spring House Nursery is currently a commercial use consisting of about 2.1 acres. One goal is to eliminate that commercial use. Now, when we did the, um, used the, the Pike overlay, the density that was permitted in there was six units per acre plus, uh, commercial component. After talking to several people, um, throughout this process, it was gotten back to me that commercial was something they were trying to avoid here. I was impartial to either, um, but.
Is that residents? I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Penna. Is that feedback from residents?
From residents that were around there. You know, they love the townhomes that we did. They love the commercial center that we have down here, but.
They don't want a good coffee shop or something across the.
I, I don't know. And I'm, you know, the, the thing about this zoning that's nice, which is what I'm asking for, by the way, today, is to have you grant us the use of that lower Pike overlay district here, uh, so we can combine these properties and use that. But the nice part about it is that it is still a conditional use zoning. So you would still have to look at the plan and approve it regardless, um, if I was given that. But in order to do it, that's the first step in order for me to go through that process. So, um.
How, just not to interrupt you, how extensive was your conversations with residents?
Just in passing, kind of, you know, this is what I was proposing. What do you think? Um, and it kind of evolved because originally it started out with a few properties. And then some of the neighbors were like, yeah, you know, you know, we're interested too. We would like to move out. And then it kind of all came together all within a matter of a few weeks. And then this was the last one. And I was not aggressive with it at all. I was just, you know, and in conversation about it. So, um, so one of them is a non-conforming use. The other one, the other properties are residential use. Now, something that's important too, uh, because I, again, I went through this entire thing in 2015, 16, 17, developing this. So I know what the concerns are, the same concerns everyone has about development, right? The, this is more of a redevelopment than a development. Um, this is not nine and a half wooded acreage. It's fully developed. Um, as a matter of fact, six acres are pretty much cleared because that's where they have the nursery. The trees that are on the nursery are sold trees. They're not trees, trees. They're being sold and replanted and sold and replanted. So, you know, the impact there is, is pretty minimal. There's, you know, a bunch of buildings that are on there already. Um, I'm not sure exactly how many, but, um, you know, ultimately planting more trees and a new development will, will actually probably increase the number of trees that are on this parcel right now. This is the aerial view on the next page, but that's what I have there as well. It's just, it's hard to see, I guess. But the magenta outline is of the actual triangle. I'm sure it's literally 200 yards up the street here. So um, I'm sure everyone knows the properties that I'm talking about. The proposed plan that I have, again, just to reiterate, is to use the lower Pike overlay zoning, uh, which will allow for six units per acre of residential along with a commercial component if appropriate. I left that in there because that's what the zoning is. Again, if it's not required or township's not interested in, it's perfectly fine. That's why I made a plan based off of, you know, some feedback that I've gotten informally. So we are proposing, and what I have proposed in the plan, which I guess I can show here on top of this here, since it came off, it's a little easier to see. Oh, and this will change, by the way. This is not, uh, this is just a concept plan just to show kind of what the, what the layout could look like, but it obviously doesn't have to look like that. There was a few things that came out through B and Z. I gave this plan to B and Z for some feedback, um, and they gave me some pretty good feedback. A couple of things were parking ratios, which are having overflow parking ratios higher. So typically, you know, I looked at, um, Madison down the street and Ambler. I looked at a couple in Blue Bell. And there's not much overflow parking at all, actually. Um, we have a lot because of the commercial building. We really don't use the overflow parking for residents, actually. It's mostly commercial that uses that. But in this case, it was requested that we put at least a one-to-one ratio of overflow parking to houses, meaning if you had a one house, you'd have at least one overflow parking spot for them. So this plan happens to show 48 townhomes with 48 parking spaces. That's why that is there the way it is. Now, that doesn't necessarily have to look like that. It's kind of squeezed in there, but now that we have more space to use, we can kind of spread that out a little bit and maybe spread out parking spaces a little bit, um, so that there's some on, you know, one end or some on another. The other thing I will say is that, you know, typically, we, we're not typically, but we still need to go through land development, right? So land develop will have to hash out stormwater management, where stormwater management goes, things like that. We talked about trails, things like that, having, you know, places for people to walk their dogs, um, which we, even on our site, we have places for people to walk their dogs around the neighborhood, you know, safely and carefully and, um, works out very well. So similarly, it would have to be done here. So all of that still needs to, to happen.
Mr. Penn, just real quick, how many spots are allocated per unit? Not, not overflow.
And so forget the overflow. There are four spots per unit, two in a garage, two in a, in a driveway. So four per unit plus one for an overflow. Yes. That's what this plan shows. So.
So the expectation is that everybody's gonna utilize, so there's two garage spaces and then two spaces within their driveway?
Correct. And we manage that very strictly through an HOA, which is the same type of HOA. Our plan is to put exactly what we have at Fairland Village in the resident side of it here. The HOA is very strict on those rules, has worked out very well. We've actually only had less than a handful of resales in five years. Uh, the residents love being there. It's a very good partnership between the commercial and the residential. But it's worked out well. But the HOA manages that, right? So, um, that's kind of what our plan is. The look of the townhouse is the look of the development, identical, brought up to the other side of, of Bethlehem Pike.
What is the square foot of each of the units living space?
So at Fairlands and would be, so, so, you know, I literally took the Fairland plan and took the footprints and put them on here. So the footprints are exactly the same. I believe they're around 2,800 square feet. If they finished basements, they would be higher.
Okay.
But it would be about 2,800 square feet.
Can you just say aesthetically, is your goal to really truly have the parking facing Bethlehem Pike or more like Fairland in the center and the houses around the.
Actually, I would have liked it to have it as close to Bethlehem Pike. If I lived there, I would like to be on the Cedar Hill side and park the other stuff on the other side. That's just me.
I'm just thinking about the people who live on the other side of Bethlehem Pike.
So where that is, it's the entrance to Truellen. So like if you're looking at Bethlehem Pike, like the entrance to Truellen is right there. I really don't see this parking being used very often based off what I see at Fairlands. Not to say that it won't or it can't, but weekends probably if someone's having a party or something like that, or I don't know, a birthday party or whatever. But it's not like that parking lot's going to be packed with cars and then leaving because they're going to a hair salon or something like that. It's not happening. Obviously, it's just overflow parking for their houses. So that's kind of the reason that we did. Now that, again, if you had feedback and you were like, I'd like to see them all ears, gonna take as much feedback as I can back, something that's gonna look really good. And then we'll present it again, because that's where the conditional use, um, process happens, right? The first step is saying, yes, you know, we need to change the map and allow the overlay. That's what I'm looking for first. There are six. So, so I purchased this property with, with being under the condition that this is going to work, right? So there are six different families that live here at varying stages of their lives. Some of them are here. But I'm trying to keep this moving so that I don't have people in limbo. Some have kids, some have young kids, some have older kids, some have joint families from two marriages. It's, it's, it's complicated. So I'm trying to make sure that I can keep this thing moving and give people a fair timeline so that they can find other places to, to move to. The last page on this, oh, the, the entrances too is also a point of interest of the B and Z. So we put an entrance on Bethlehem Pike and on Cedar Hill. So just thinking conceptually, because I've been looking at this for weeks and weeks. If I lived there, I would be going out Bethlehem Pike to go north. Obviously, you'd go out and make a right. There's no chance I'm coming down Cedar and trying to make a right when I can go out there and make a right. Same thing with south. I would probably, I would, I might go out Cedar Hill, go down and make a, a left because you can jump right on Bethlehem Pike there. But we're trying to push the majority of that traffic onto Bethlehem. But we're trying to push majority of that traffic onto Bethlehem Pike instead of Cedar Hill. I know Cedar Hill gets a lot of cut-through traffic. That's what I've been told about the residents that live there. I know quite a few residents that have lived there. I did a preliminary traffic study that was just quick about the traffic count. So I'm not terribly concerned because the traffic count is actually lower than what we did at Fairlands, because we had a commercial component there. So I'm not terribly concerned with the traffic impact here. But nevertheless, that's why we put two, and one entrance on Cedar Hill and one entrance on Bethlehem Pike. This is the actual development itself, something that we were talking about. Target market similar to Fairland Village. Now, the other thing with Fairland Village, the nice part about it is you're talking tax dollars with no services. The HOA handles trash. The HOA takes care of streets. The HOA plows. The HOA takes care of the grass. Everything is done by the HOA. Target range for these homes are similar to Fairland Village, 850 to 950. And in Fairland Village currently, there are zero school age children that are there. Zero. Because if you have $900,000 to buy a house, you would probably buy one with a lawn that you can put a swing set in and have your kids raised there. They don't do that there because the HOA limits the use of the grounds to walk in your dogs and you can't run a barbecue out there. You have use of your deck and that's what you have use of, your driveway, and that's it. So it kind of limits the impact to the schools without being in age restricted. It kind of default sets who would be buying there. Similar thing happens at, with obviously Fairlands, but also down at Madison. It's the same idea, same target market who have been moving in at Madison.
Similar floor, like similar amount of bedrooms and things like that?
All similar, similar to Fair, it's identical to Fairlands. Yeah. And that's about it. I've gone through pretty much everything I needed to go through. Again, I'm sorry that I got this late. I tried to send something a couple of days ago, but I didn't want to mess up Jamie with her presentation and stuff here. So I just kind of let it go and figured I'd do it on the fly. But that's what we're proposing. And, and to move it along, I am on the agenda for September 8th. I'm hoping that between now and then, I can get some feedback from you.
September 9th.
Or September 9th? Okay, yes.
Just wanted to, this is, we wanted to give the public the opportunity to see it as many times as possible.
Sure.
More extensive presentation, September 9th. But understanding that people are on vacation in August, we wanted to at least introduce it to the boards that we can give you meaningful feedback and then with the public who's around, kind of share any questions, concerns or anything like that. And then have a more formalized presentation than like.
Understood.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The folks that, you know, are sort of committed, you said there were six neighbors who are actively living.
Yes.
In, in those homes and without like disclosing any folks' personal lives. I'm just trying to understand, are they in support of this project because they want to get out of here? Or are they looking to move into these homes? Or is it a mixed bag of?
So there's a couple here that you can certainly ask. I don't know if they're going to answer, but they can certainly ask. But from, from what I gathered is the nurseries there is a little bit invasive, right? So it's getting messy, it's getting messier. They want to retire. They want to get out of there. There's dump trucks, trash, or tractor trailers that deliver in there that dump that stuff. There's some houses that literally back right up to it and hear it all the time. So when they had the opportunity, it was a pretty good opportunity to kind of get rid of all of that and, and move on. So that's what I got from the people that told me. So it's kind of a mixed bag because there's some retirees as well that, that want to kind of not take care of an acre.
I'm just wondering if you've also had feedback from neighbors who will remain in their existing homes with this development, you know, maybe in its backyard or very close to its backyard? Have you heard from any?
So I did talk to a couple of neighbors that live up the street. But again, right now, everything's bordered by 309 Bethlehem Pike or Cedar Hill. So the only people that would be directly impacted, I guess, would be directly across the street on Cedar Hill. And across the street the other way is.
They're still crossing the, the road.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, I totally get it. Yeah. So that's without me knocking on doors and that kind of stuff. People in past, and I see a lot of people in, you know, my restaurant down the street plus Fireside is my other restaurant and Ambler. So, you know, between the two, I, I know people that live around here, but I have not had those full conversations.
Okay, sure. I was just wondering.
So, were you going to ask a question?
You go ahead.
Are, are you proposing any commercial aspect like you have already with the other development?
I have not. So in this plan that I've proposed, now again, this has to go through two processes. One is the overlay, using the overlay. That's really the key start because before I can do a conditional use, which would show a plan to say this is the plan we want to use, I have to be able to use that zoning. Apparently, it's a legal thing where I can't do both at the same time. I was trying to do everything at the same time, but doesn't seem it'll work that way. So when we do the, you know, when you guys give me feedback, if it's something that the township and the residents are interested in, I'd certainly be happy to restructure this. I did start out with that concept because it works very well at Fairlands, but at the same time, people didn't want, you know, a commercial building where people are coming in and out of Cedar Hill. They thought it would be problematic if they were going that way. That's not to say you can't go out Bethlehem Pike. So our building is also extremely successful. I mean, we have great tenants in there, great businesses in there, but that's also not to say that half of Bethlehem Pike is not empty. So there's still a lot of stores and stuff that are empty. So there's a concern there as well if it's, you know, but that's neither here nor there. Our building's doing extremely well. We don't have any vacancies. We haven't had any vacancies in five years. So. You know, it's really, it's really kind of, it's an opportunity to develop a parcel that's very unique in a very unique spot. And I think it's something that, you know, you as a board and residents can have input into. It doesn't happen very often to get 10 contiguous acres on a highway in a township like Lower Gwinnett, so.
So the overlay, approving the overlay would not preclude potential commercial? If that is the way that folks?
Yes, you still need to give a conditional use approval based off a plan specifically. The last board that approved Fairlands was very specific on what they wanted and how they wanted it. And I complied with everything that they had asked for. So.
I just have a couple of questions. So I know that there's been some recent changes in this plan or this presentation probably was developed before those recent changes. So you're talking about a certain number of units included in this presentation. Is that changing based upon your acquisition of?
No. So it's adding 1.7 acres, not all of it. We need room for stormwater management. We, we need room for that type of thing. I have not had my engineer go through this completely yet. This is done more by a design engineer, not by a civil engineer. So it still needs to be done to make sure that we have room for certain things. So I would think that the, that the, now with the 1.7 acres would, would be definitely be, bless you, definitely be under the six units per acre allowance by the zoning. It would definitely be under that. Whereas I don't think we would fit 58 townhouses here and still have room for that stuff just because of the way 309 comes into play because there's an easement there of all that, you know, on the back there. And we'd still want a pretty heavy buffer from 309 and from, you know, you don't want to have a grill, you know, 20 feet from 309 highway.
58 or 54? It's six units per acre, it's nine acres, right?
9.5 acres times six, 57, 50, I don't know, 57. But we would, I, I would propose, when I did look at it, I would propose between 48 and 52 is where I would propose. 48 to 52.
You have 48 showing in the plan now?
48 showing in the plan with 48 spots.
So you're thinking about maybe two or three more?
Correct, at most, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And if a commercial component were in there, which I don't see it going in there, but if it is something that's desired, then we would adjust that and move things around there as well.
It's hard, man, you got the corner piece. I would hate to see an instruction happen with the people still in the corner lot and all that going on around them. I think it's, it's, it's good all around.
I agree.
I think that would be a major concern if, if you didn't have that corner piece. I think my, my major feedback right now, just off the cuff, is really, how do the, how do the most closest nearest neighbors feel? So the people across the street on Cedar Hill, the people across the street on Bethlehem Pike. I know that there's a good amount of like entranceway into Truellen and I don't think that there's a house really close.
No, it's, they're back.
Yeah, they're.
It would really be Cedar Hill, I think, is the.
Yeah.
And, and apparently they get a lot of cut-through now.
It'll come down to design, honestly. I mean, you, you have almost 10 acres.
Right.
You know, if you don't, and I, I wouldn't think that you would, but if you don't build everywhere that you can build, you can put a lot of, you can put a lot of trees and other things up there, a lot of buffers to make it.
Hide the parking.
Hide the parking and make it beautiful.
That's exactly right, yes. Which we will review.
There's a, there's a real opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed. And a lot of walking.
Also a big point, like making it beautiful, aesthetically pleasing to the eye.
Yes, 100%. Entryway, entry features on both sides. You know, we have a beautiful entry feature where we are with the walls. I mean, all that is, you know, make that really pretty coming into Lower Gwinnett, yeah.
I think that this is probably a very realistic place to put this in.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you guys for having me. I appreciate it.
Jimmy, do you have anything you want to share? No? Any questions or comments from the public?
From the public, well, yeah.
Anybody have anything that they wanted to share?
Just a question. And I'm almost semi-disappointed that you're not going to put a Pennas Market in because I really like Pennas Market. But that's for you to arm wrestle with the zoning board. So just to make sure I'm saying correctly, the, the, the Camp Hill side has several homes there. So you have acquired those?
Cedar Hill.
Cedar Hill. And so this would involve raising those on this triangle? On that triangle? Correct, yes. Okay, okay. Yeah. And since this would basically butt against the 309 entrance, if there was ever a determination that like a, like a noise abatement wall was needed, like we've been doing along DeKalb there, would that be the responsibility of the developer or the township?
So I can't answer that. However, I did walk that. And the neat part about 309 there is it actually goes under and you can't hear it.
Yeah, and it is on ramp, off ramp, so it's different than.
Right.
You know, full speed.
You kind of come on.
There's actually no ramp. It just, it just merges.
Yeah, there's, there's no ramp there or on Cedar Hill. And it's actually, when you're there, surprisingly, because it's down, you can't hear it. I thought it was gonna, I walked it and was shocked.
I'll, I'll say this. Where I sit. Anyone that buys one of these places and doesn't think there might be noise from 309 and later comes to us and says, we want a sound barrier. I, I think that's going to be a tough argument. It's different if somebody put 309 in after they built the homes. Anyone who buys there knows exactly what they're taking.
I mean, there's Bethlehem Pike and then.
They'll buy if you don't want to.
I mean, it would be a tough argument to say the township needs to put a wall.
I think it's a tough argument to say anybody puts a wall in there. You know exactly what you're getting.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Should come as no surprises, right? No, I, I agree, I agree. But, you know, better to ask the question now, you know, just as I don't want to have to write that check. I suspect the township will not, at least while I'm.
We, we had to add. We had to add fencing at Fairlands. We didn't actually have to do it, but the HOA did it for the neighbors and the.
Medical office?
Medical, the medical. We just did it. So I would assume anything that would have to happen would be the responsibility of the HOA and therefore the homeowners that are there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any additional comments? Come on up, you want to do it again?
There is a comment online in the meeting chat as well. It just says I'm, it's from a Barbara and it says, I'm very concerned about the entrance road on Cedar Hill. This is already a very busy and dangerous area of Cedar Hill and adding approximately 50 homes, school buses, et cetera, will be a nightmare.
Barbara, I, I appreciate your comment. Could you just tell us your address so we can notate it in the public comment? Maybe you're listening? Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. I don't know, Pete, if you want to reiterate any of the points that you made?
Yeah, so really the only main comment about that with the school buses is I don't see this being a place where there's going to be a ton of kids. Again, you can't use the yard. You can't use the property to put up swing sets, pools, partial pools. In five years, I've seen one school bus stop by and that was for one family until they got to a certain age and they left. I just don't see the target market happening here. Now, again, with the entrance on Bethlehem Pike, if anybody's going north on Bethlehem Pike, there's no chance they would go out Cedar Hill. Unfortunately, we can't stop people from going out Cedar Hill, but they most certainly wouldn't be going out Cedar Hill if they're going north unless they have a death wish. So.
Certainly something that land development will.
Yeah, I, I think that's important to note when we do a design, where that lies on there. But again, we have a little bit of opportunity now on that triangle point to maybe clean it up a little bit so you can see out that, you know, you can see right instead of having it covered. So that's an opportunity for us to clean that up and maybe make that intersection a little safer.
Appreciate that. And that is a comment that I think other development that has been proposed on Cedar Hill. We have had many neighbors bring that. This is a different part of Cedar Hill to some point, but I think land development could address a lot of those concerns. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Any additional questions or comments from the public? Giving you guys a second go around. Seeing none, thank you so much, Mr. Penna.
Thank you all for having me. Enjoy your summer. Hope to see you at Pennas Market a little bit.
Should have brought, should have brought a hoagie.
You don't need to stay, Mr. Penna.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a good Italian hoagie.
No, it's a good BLT.
It's a good Italian hoagie. I fed all my out-of-towners from Pennas this weekend.
Good, okay. Big. Okay. Hold on one second. I have to get back to my agenda. Apologize. Okay, next up, we have consideration to consider the authorization to advertise a public hearing for the amendment of the conservation easement for Penland Woods extending the easement to parcel number that's included in the board packet. It's a lot of numbers, 390004414002. And included in the board packet is a lot of history related to this amendment, the acquisition of Penland Woods Park, the grant that was provided by the county as well as monies that were provided by Wasickin Trails. And, and what we are doing is identifying a 26 parcel next to Penland Woods Park that may be appropriate to add to the park's existing conservation easement. It's outlined on the map. And we are currently working to do our due diligence along with Wasickin Trails. A draft of the easement was provided just this, the 18th, last week, Friday. And so this is the opportunity for us to advertise a public hearing for the amendment of the conservation easement. Any questions from the board? Reason why we're doing this ahead of what would typically be the timeframe is that during the summer months, we, we meet once a month and the requirement for a 30-day waiting period for the legal notice, once it's advertised and the community's understandable growing anticipation and maybe impatience with the length of time it has taken for us to get to this approval process for the cell tower, we're trying to authorize this advertisement now rather than wait until the end of August to do so. The legal notice won't run until we get authorization from Wasickin Trails and they've done their due diligence and they've had the opportunity to review and comment on the easement amendment. on the easement amendment. Legal notice advertising the public hearing will be required to be sent to nearby neighbors and property owners once that due diligence is satisfied. So what this essentially is us doing is authorizing the advertisement ahead of the time that we actually will be doing that advertisement, given the fact that we won't meet again until the very last week in August. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertisement of a public hearing for the amendment of the conservation easement for Penland Woods Park, extending the easement to parcel 390004414002. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Included in our board packet is our financial report from our finance director. Are there any questions from our finance director? She gonna give us a mini year? Come on up, Ms. Holdeman.
Okay, so rather than just go through the memo, what I tried to do is, because we're June, we're halfway through, I kind of wanted to go through our our fund groupings to let you know how we kind of are standing up against our budget, if I can do that. So in the packet, I do have the operating funds, which are 1 through 5, the streetlight, fire protection, fire hydrant, parks, and along with the general fund, and I've grouped them together because they are all of our operating funds, and the reports that you have in front of you, you'll see that. Basically, what I want to say outright is we're on target and we're doing very well. We are, we've collected 92% of our budgeted real estate taxes, which is very good, and it is only June. We collect most of them at the beginning of the year, so that sort of is on target, but we did very well there. Also, for our earned income tax, which we, and our business privilege tax, local services tax, and work and town tax, we're at 65% of budget. A lot of that is driven by our business privilege tax, we collected about $200,000 over what we had budgeted, but I did go back and look at that because Mimi brought that to my attention, and about $190,000 of that was prior year, so that wasn't the business privilege tax for 2025.
Okay.
Now, you're at budget though for collecting current year, so we will probably still be over budget for the current year, also in the revenue that's coming through.
That new business, like, do we have any to speak, do we know anything, or is this an anomaly?
Well, um...
Are people being more upfront?
The business privilege tax, you can collect back taxes, and it can go back, it can go back to 2016. So I can pull up the monthly reports if you want to see them, I could...
Is it new business, or are people coming forward and saying, "Hey, I owe you this"?
We didn't pay these 10 years. Well, no, those would be the prior year, so this year a meeting budget means that it's new businesses.
It's new business, okay. That's very good.
Yep.
They don't file a return, you can actually go back.
Is that a Berkheimer thing, like they're, they're getting more, or they're collecting from?
Well, they're the tax collectors, but they have to register, and you owe the business privilege tax, whether it's Berkheimer collecting or someone else, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yes, they do go after the back, yes, absolutely, they do, yes. Um, and just...
Thing, and I hadn't, I just told, I was so focused on the business privilege tax, I missed that the transfer taxes are still, are kind of trailing, like, we're doing really well collectively with these taxes, and even better now that I look at it, given that the transfer tax is lagging a bit.
But with the transfer tax, I always think a lot of houses sell with the transfer tax occurs in the summer.
Yeah.
Right before, so there's kind of a timing difference in that, and that's kind of what I go through when I look at this. We're on track for the business licenses. Our interest earnings are about 45.6%, but that's all told, we're pretty much on track for that also. The state shared revenue entitlements per the municipal pension, the state aid for the fire, we get that in the fall, so we haven't collected any of that yet, so we will be getting that. And then if you look at our building permits and overall licenses, we're only at 39%, but again, I think some of that is seasonal and sense that a lot of people do a lot of building and construction, and they get the permits and their licenses in the summer. This is just through June, so I think that we'll probably have the next three months will also be good, and we might be able to catch up on that overall. Public safety, that's, there are billings out for things, we are not going to be billing for the other half of the school resource officer. Okay, so we don't have that, and we bill in, we just billed in July for the crossing guard, so we'll be getting that, so that'll bring us up to about the 50% mark where we want to be. Recreation, we're at about 45% in revenue, miscellaneous revenue. We are at 116% of that, and that's because we did PA unclaimed property, and give Mimi credit for that, she told me to look into it, and I got us back to Pico checks, okay? But also, there was an escrow default.
We had checks out there in unclaimed property?
Yeah.
That we never got?
We cashed them, yeah.
That's beautiful.
We never cashed them.
It just sat there?
Cash them.
No, you didn't claim them?
So, yes, we have to return them to us, so I have that on my calendar to do that every year in case anything...
For summer with surprise.
Also, in the revenue here for like the dividends, we get that at the end of the year, and with regards to our transfers, I did those transfers here that were listing for the sewer and the debt and the general fund, we do that in July. That's when I did those, so those will be next year. Then if we go on to the expenses, our expenses are pretty much on target, our revenue is a little above, but if you look at each one of the departments, so the executive department, we're at 50%, that makes total sense. The finance department, we're a little under budget, but that's because we didn't have a staff accountant, so we didn't count on that, okay? And I'm looking here, so for the tax collector, we're at 61%, but that's because she buys her supplies ahead of time to mail out for the postages and the envelopes of the real estate taxes. The buildings and plant repairs and maintenance, you're going to see that through most of our department, repairs and maintenance also usually occurs in the summer, in the summer months, so we might be under budget on some of those. The police are at about 46%, but that's because a lot of their payments for longevity and things like that occur at the end of the year or in the fall. So when we hit that, that's just a timing difference that always happens. The volunteer fire relief expense comes at the, we pay that out when we get it in the fall, so that also will happen in the fall. The ambulance contribution I made in July, so that'll come through. For building and zoning, we're at about 39.7%, but again, we are missing an employee in that department, and that can cause some of that to be lower than usual. And in the public works department, we're a little lower, again, for the repairs and maintenance, and also, we put a lot of the salt purchases through liquid fuels because we're allowed to use it for that, and we had monies that were in there from reserves, so we put it in there. The street lighting is just for the streetlights, so we put money in there for repairs and maintenance, which we haven't really done yet, so that's why that's at 27%. See here. Oh, for Parks and Rec, we're at about 50%, which makes sense, and again, some of our expenditures that we pay out in the third quarter for any types of contributions, and the employee benefits are under budget because all the MMOs and things like that we pay either in November or in December. So, operating fund-wise, I think, you know, we're doing pretty well, we're showing much more income as a surplus over our budget, but I think that that's going to kind of...
Even out?
Even out, yeah, as we get through the end. Just to highlight a little bit on the sewer and the capital because of the types of funds they are. So, the sewer, we, for the sewer operating, we're right on point, you know, we have the two quarters in for both the billings and for the payments that we have received, everything seems to be, to be working out there, except the capital projects for sewer, both what we've run through, the operating for Ambler, and the capital projects that we've planned for in the sewer capital reserve fund, that were, they're going to happen more in the summer when we get those going. But that seems to be working out well. And then with the capital funds, so a couple of things happen with the capital funds. So we have that open space fund, we have our capital reserve, we have highway, the liquid fuels. I took for the land purchase for the public works building, I took 2.4 million out of open space reserves, moved it to the capital fund, so you're going to see, if you look at the graphs, that the revenue is higher and it was unbudgeted because it's money coming in. But I put that 2.4 with some of the reserves from the capital fund to pay out the 3.3 for the land purchase, so the land purchase was unbudgeted, and that's listed in there. With the next motion that you have, or what I explained is, we're using our reserves instead of the first bond issue that we did, because the first bond issue isn't subject to arbitrage. I really don't have a limit except for three years to use that, so I want to use it out of the $10 million bond issuance we're doing, because I do have certain criteria I need to meet with that, and it is subject to arbitrage, so it just makes more sense to use the money out of that. That's why the resolution is in there, and that's why when, if you look at the capital funds and you're looking at revenues and expenditures, you're going to see that difference.
Okay.
But other than that, you know, we're pretty on target. Did you guys have any questions about anything?
You're doing an awesome job.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, I just had a question about the open space, but you answered it in the memo and explained it here, so thank you, no question?
Yep, no question?
No.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you, Melinda.
It's awesome. I know that we don't have a lot of questions, but we greatly appreciate the diligence that you're paying attention to.
You highlight the things you know we'll have questions about on the first page.
So presents no issues. Okay. So I think Melinda alluded to our next consideration, which is Resolution 202513, reimbursement through bond proceeds, outlined in the board packet as a memo. Basically, and Melinda just stated it, if you need me to repeat it, I have concern, larger concerns. But based on that, she would prefer that we would spend the $10 million issuance prior to the $5 million issuance, and this resolution's allowing the township to reimburse itself for the payments made for the public works project 60 days prior to the adoption of this resolution, and that would include the land purchase on June 27, 2025. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
So Eric Holmquist again, just relative to the bond and then the public works project, which I know that's an important project, and maybe one memo behind, if so, I apologize, so you can tell me, but for that project, has that been scoped and budgeted at this point, or are we still sort of working on that for the public works?
I think it's safe to say we're still working on that.
Okay, which is fine, obviously, my concern is we're now borrowing money against the project, we don't know what the project's going to be. So what's the timeline when we think we'll have that scoped and budgeted?
I would probably...
I mean, we're not working, we're not working on it like to that degree.
Yeah, I mean, we have a good sense, we have a very good sense of cost estimates, design. I think we're more in fine tuning, is that fair to say?
Yeah, we're waiting to get in now, we've, we actually had gotten some design proposals, weren't satisfied with them, are going through a process, had passed a wider net. They should be coming in in the next couple of weeks, so it's getting the design team now together that would start working on very much refining the high-level plan and high-level cost estimates that we have.
And the 15 million of these two bonds, is that all to be allocated towards this project?
No.
Okay, so it could have other purposes as well?
No.
Oh, it's all for this project, but...
That will not...
That will not satisfy the entire project, no.
Right, but that 15 is at least earmarked for the public works.
All of this goes to just public works.
Increment of X.
Yes.
And when we anticipate that 10-year bond to be issued, and what's the planned term on that?
I don't think we can say that yet.
I think we have a general idea.
We have a general idea, but we'd be... So, and the reason that these are happening incrementally is just to take advantage of provisions in the tax code that work better. Melinda mentioned, because of the $5 million bond issuance was only $5 million, it's not subject to arbitrage.
Right.
So we can earn more interest than we're paying.
Right.
$10 million bonds can't, but because it's only $10 million, only $10 million, it's no more than $10 million, let me say that. We, they'll be set up so there's an opportunity for refunding should interest rates drop over the term of the bonds. If they were more than $10 million, we couldn't do that, you have to pay for it. But that's within each calendar year, so we could only do, so we did the $5 million last year, $10 million this year, and then we want to get the design professionals in and a better cost estimate to figure out what bond issuance number three. At that point, next year, we should have answers to the questions that you're asking in more detail.
And the sequence of the spend makes sense, I mean, as you described. I'm just trying to figure out, again, we're borrowing money, we're spending money, but we don't know what we're actually building yet, so just curious when all is going to come, and what is the intended terms of the bond? Is this a 10-year bond, 20, 30, 40 year?
That's part of what we're still figuring out, based on interest rates, 20, 25, or 30, we're looking at all three different ones, potentially, you know, different interest rates, how you layer in that with the $5 million and a $10 million, and waiting even a couple more months before, we have to do it by the end of this year, but the later we wait this year, it's a little bit less of a guess, you know, we're just further in, we have a little bit more information.
Well, not for nothing, we know rates are going to come down too, so there are a lot of moving parts, I'll absolutely grant you that.
There are, and that's where it's, you know, I think it's going to be there 25 or 30 years, probably, I'm not sure which yet.
For building, that would make sense.
It's certainly, that's, the building hopefully is going to exceed the lifetime of that.
Right, right, okay, I'm just trying to wrap my arms around what this thing looks like and when we're going to have some clarity around.
There's a presentation from the end of last year, prior to the bond, the original bond issuance, we did a very like extensive presentation, John walked us through all the work that everybody did in advance to prepare for, you know, demonstrate the need for this building, what we need in the building, what we conceptually think it could look like, rough cost estimates.
Yeah.
And it's on the website.
It's all on the website, so I think it talks through, I mean, to say that the plan's not fully developed would be inaccurate, but we're not at the point where we have the architectural drawings and all of that, so we can't say that we're done, so all of that's online, and all of like the decisions that we kind of outlined ahead of time, also online.
Yeah, okay, that's great, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we have Resolution 202513, I'd like to make a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up is the consideration of our Lower Gwinnett Township sidewalks and trails plan. I don't believe we need any more presentations, we did have a few. And I think we got really good feedback and still continue to get good feedback. Included in the board packet is a memo just kind of giving the overview of that draft sidewalk and trail strategic plan that we discussed at the June 24th Board of Supervisors meeting and the meeting prior to that. Everything has been updated, routes have been prioritized as discussed, and suggestions for the existing map were viewed incorporated as appropriate. Are there any questions from the board?
Are there any updates? Basically, this is the same as what you presented to us earlier?
So the map has changed since the last meeting, but when I read through that list of feedback and we said staff recommends incorporating that, Jim and Chad have incorporated all of those things into this latest version.
Okay.
So nothing we haven't talked about yet, it was all the things that we did talk about that we started putting in, we put in.
Got you. I was having some trouble with the scrolling through this and the map wasn't fitting on my computer, and I couldn't tell exactly, you know, comparing it to what it was before, if there were major changes or not.
No, it was really the additions, and the idea is that if the board approves it tonight, Jim has promised me he'll give everybody hard copies, but he's holding them ransom until it's approved.
That sounds like Jim.
Thank you, John.
No problem.
Any additional questions from the board? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Lower Gwinnett Township sidewalks and trails plan as included in the board packet, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, John and Jim, for all your work related to putting this together, and that parking rec group committee instead. Next up, we have consideration for the Gilmore and Associates proposal in the amount of $23,500 to complete work needed for the Pen Ambler Park Act 2 final report for the Department of Environmental Protections. Included in the board packet is an outline of the proposals we received, and the list of the items necessary to close out the Phase 2 study and the portion of Pen Ambler Park property, and what is required by PA Department of Environmental Protections. So although the physical barrier installation of the park is complete, the administrative requirements must be fulfilled. Gilmore and Associates proposal included additional sampling, soil analysis along with completion and submission of the required remedial investigative report, cleanup, and their final report. Should anything additional related to remedial work or risk assessment be required following this work, there's a possibility that additional funds could be required. If so, Gilmore will provide an estimate of those probable causes and those additional items for inclusion in 2026 budget. The environmental covenant will be prepared by our solicitor, and the estimated completion time is approximately 18 months from the approval of the proposal and execution of the contract for services. Included in the board packet is additional information related to those tasks, the scope of those services. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Anybody online?
No.
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal in the amount of $23,500 to complete work needed for the Pen Ambler Park Act 2 final report for DEP, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is really the end of it.
This could get the award for longest process to...
Motion is approved. And I think we all share your sentiment, Mr. Torsky, since this is going back to the 90s. Considering a donation to our Horseways 2025 Paper Chase is next on our agenda, a memo from our town manager, township managers included in the board and packet. I think on behalf of the Horseways, they have asked for a donation in the amount of $200 for the Paper Chase. It's a timed ride where riders follow a marked trail, in this case, it's going to be eight miles through Mandarin Farm in the Highlands, and they strive for best times, team times, etc. This organization is in our community and has used our parking trails for question riding for over 40... And they strive for best times, team times, et cetera. This organization is in our community and has used our parking trails for question riding for over forty years. They work to preserve and protect open space and trails for horseback riding while supporting and equating community for future generations. For consideration is this donation of two hundred dollars. Are there any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Anybody online? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to authorize two hundred dollar donation to the horseways, two thousand twenty-five paper chase. Is there a second?
Second.
All those, all those in favor? Motion carries. Included in our board packet is our engineer report for July two thousand and twenty-five. Are there any questions for our engineer? Seeing none, thank you so much to our engineer. Included in our board packet is also our traffic engineer report for July two thousand twenty-five. Are there any questions? For traffic engineer? Seeing none, thank you so much to our traffic engineer. Included in our board packet is invoices for July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Are there any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve invoice report for July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Also included in our board packet is our minutes from our June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Ms. Martin should abstain. Are there any questions, concerns or revisions to the minutes of our June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five meeting? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor? Is anybody post?
I'm not allowed to vote.
I know.
I said aye.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Sorry.
Push everybody.
I'm just running out of energy. I couldn't.
Okay, I'm sorry. Included in the board packet are supervisor liaison reports that you can read at your leisure, staff updates. Anyone have any updates?
I, I have a quick one, just an update that did see, the, the clip has been submitted to the regulators and is under review.
Wow, okay, that's a big update.
That is a big update.
Another twenty year project.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jean.
Supervisor comments, Tessie?
Yeah, my only comment quickly is to thank John and Jim and all the participants who put together the, the, and Chad, the trail. Plan, that has been a sore point or a pain point, I guess, for a long time, not having a unified. A strategic plan on going forward with which developments need a sidewalk and, you know, connecting the trails and so forth. So I'm, I'm very pleased with how it turned out and thank you for your work and that's all.
Janine? Just for everyone's benefit, we are at full vendor capacity for Fall Fest already.
Congratulations.
Oh, yay. And come out to the concert on Wednesday and come out again in August. We have one more in August. August thirteenth, there you go, Mimi. Thank you.
Give me.
Thank you, everyone, for all their hard work. It's just amazing what you guys did, so thank you.
Kudos to the public works folks and the parking rec for the park that used to be the old Texaco Station. It looks great and you'd never even know there was a gas station there. Although I'm sure DEP will come give us a pass. They seem to like to do that, but it looks beautiful. Thank you very much.
I want to echo everything that everyone has said. Don't forget to come out to our, our concert in the park tomorrow. I want to thank everybody for that sidewalk and trails plan. Everybody that was involved is a huge deal. I was once criticized for saying that we have trails to nowhere and I think we're, we're actively addressing the fact that these trails will lead somewhere. So thank you guys so much. Also, just thank you to, to Melinda for, for putting together such a robust presentation for us always. And, and to our public works folks for all the work that I see that they're doing. Just want to congratulate them. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.